Sixteen twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Matt, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Present.
Raymond. Corbin.
Here.
Sol.
Here.
Rowan.
Present.
Shay.
Present.
Schulteis.
Present.
And Mayor Box.
Present.
Mr. Mary Havocorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting, as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening by City Manager Keith Van Beek, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
Thank you, will you please join me? Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for warm weather, a wonderful place to live and visit and recreate, and we welcome the visitors to our community. We also live in a world full of floods and fires and war, and we ask from your hand for safety, for peace, and for healing. We ask also for safety for the residents of our community, the visitors of our community, but also those who serve in their roles for the city and the Board of Public Works. Grant wisdom as we consider the work of the city this evening. It's in your name we pray, amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda are our Consent Agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and they will be enacted in one motion, as they've been previously reviewed by council as part of our council packet. And unless a member of the audience or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it will be placed in regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone would like to remove anything from the consent agenda, Matt, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Yes. Item four A, excuse the absence of council member Raymond. Item four B, approve the amendments of the July two twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Item four C, oath of office. Item twelve A one, resolution authorizing transfer of funds for contribution to the city. Item twelve A two, Holland Energy Park chemical feed pumps. Item twelve A three, renewable energy certificate power purchase commitment. Item twelve E four point two, accept Foam Recycling Coalition grant. Item twelve E four point three, approve purchase of two infield groomers for use by the Recreation Department. Item twelve E four point four, approve the purchase of one twenty twenty-six Ford Interceptor utility vehicle for Police Patrol Division. Item four E four point five, approve purchase of cardiac monitor for Fire Division. Item twelve E six point two, employee service credit purchase, MERS-defined benefit pension plan. Item twelve E six point three, MERS four fifty-seven plan addendum to amend the employer contribution for eligible employee group. Item twelve E six point four, reclassification of Winma Island Gardens position. Item twelve E six point five, approval of a special liquor license for the Taste of Downtown Holland fundraiser. Item twelve E six point six, Downtown Development Authority Board reappointments. Item twelve E six point seven, award bid for Clerk and Human Relations Office renovations. And finally, item twelve E six point eight, award bid for Holland Museum ventilation project.
Great, thank you, Matt. Is there any member of the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Mr. Corbin, I believe you had one.
Yes, Your Honor, item in, please.
And that would be item twelve?
Management Administrative Services.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, item four in, so Management Administrative Services for the downtown group.
Okay, that's for the approval of the special liquor license for Taste of Downtown Holland fundraiser?
That's correct.
Okay, and so that will be placed at twelve E six point five. Any other items to remove from the consent agenda from council? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Move to approve as amended?
As amended, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right. We've got a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Moved by Sol, support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Matt, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
And Mayor Box.
Yes.
That passes.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the public the opportunity to address council both at our regular meetings and our study sessions, and frankly, at every single one of our board committee and commission meetings. We do have guidelines that we ask you to follow. Each person may speak one time. We do limit your time to five minutes, and there are three lights on the dais in front of me, there's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time, yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We ask that you approach the podium and you please state your name and the municipality in which you live, because it's important to us to know whether or not you are resident of the city of Holland. We please also ask that you address council with your comments, and this is a time for you to address council about anything that you think is important to talk about. But we don't answer questions during this time or do we engage in discussion, but if there's a question that staff can answer after the meeting, they may be able to circle back with that. Now, having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Jamie Adams, I don't live inside the city of Holland, I did work at LG Energy Solutions Michigan, and this is the matter of which I'm bringing up to you.
Could you tell us which city, what city you do live in?
What city I do live in? I do live in Coopersville.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, I would like to challenge the city council to examine LG Energy Solutions Michigan, determine are they being a good steward of the goodwill of the city of Holland, and how many full-time and permanent employees have the jobs have they created? I had worked there from June of twenty twenty-one until May of twenty twenty-five, and at the time that I was working there, I had experienced bullying, harassment, discrimination, denied training and transfers, and at the time that I resigned, I had intermittent FMLA and ADA accommodations, which they did not honor. I finally ended up resigning and going on social security. But during this time, I mean, I was required to purchase my own safety equipment, bump caps, safety vests, vinyl gloves, I had to acknowledge cancer risk working in the electrode area where I was at. I had complaints to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights and the EEOC, which all it got me was the letter for the right to sue, but I couldn't find an attorney to even take my case. I had to work in conditions there where I didn't have any break room. It was the one time that I had an eight-hour workday that I had one, one-hour period of break the whole time. When you were in the production area, there was no eating, there was no drinking, there was no bathroom that you could use. I had to deal with, you know, the sexual harassment, the pictures being handed to me with, that they drew with like male anatomy, and just made my life bad, you know, because when I reported the sexual harassment and everything with the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, it turned into a retaliation case, that they made me work in conditions there that caused my medical conditions to need accommodations for ADA, being diabetic, being sleep apnea. And I mean, it came right down to it, my doctor asked to have a different physician assigned to me, and they absolutely refused, and I couldn't take it anymore, and I did resign. I don't think, you know, with LG being a rent-a-zone, that they don't pay any property taxes, you guys need to really look at the benefits of giving them all the tax breaks, you know, and they're not being good stewards of the city. I witnessed them pouring down cleaning product down the sewer, you know, that ended up in the retention pond, you guys issued the fifteen thousand dollar fine, you know, to them. They did other things there too, dumping it down the drain. You tell the Michigan Department or Mausia, and they want you to do their job, they want dates, they want times and everything else. You know, they don't want to do their job, Michigan Department of Civil Rights didn't want to do their job, and neither did the Equal Opportunity Employment Commission. So, I know that they've got almost a revolving door there, people, you know, they're coming and going, they can't keep anybody there, they treat people so badly, they hire them for a job, they have no idea what they're even getting involved with, they get hired one day and they quit the next day, or sometimes they don't even make it through their lunch. You guys really need to examine, you know, whether it's beneficial to the city of Holland residents to give them, you know, a no-tax break, because I don't think that they are. I've been very badly treated, this is my only recourse. I couldn't even hire a lawyer to take my case, but, you know, like I said, this is my last-ditch effort to at least get a little bit of justice on here, letting them, letting you guys know that I don't think that they're a good place to, you know, cut them a break. So, I guess I said my piece, if you guys do nothing, I mean, you know, that's your option, but I'm telling you right here and now that I don't think that they deserve it. They've been terrible to me, and there's been a lot of other people that they've been terrible to. Anybody you talk to that's been working here, they'll tell you that it's a rotten place to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson Zeeland. I begin this evening with a scripture, because many of you are acquainted with the Christian faith. Religious freedom in the Constitution protects our calling, Micah six, six through eight. He has told you, O man, what is good, and what does the Lord of angel armies require of you? To accept justice, to love, to diligently practice kindness and compassion, to walk humbly with your God, setting aside any overblown sense of importance and self-righteousness. I want you to know that this is what has guided me through the last five years in presenting our position as an advocate for religious expression, demonstration, and speech. First of all, I want to apologize to Mr. Keith Ver Beek, because in haste in getting my messages across, I have unconsciously called him Mr. Van Beek. I've gotten it confused, the Ver and the Van, because Attorney Vanderveen's name. Some may think I'm doing it on purpose, and I am not, so I apologize. Last week, I got an interesting message from First Liberty Institute concerning a case that will be heard by the Supreme Court twenty twenty-six. It parallels in some ways with our Colin Park Banshell stage five-year dispute. I will send it to the council members to hear the details of how it will impact Colin Park Banshell policy discriminating and curtailing our religious expression. Stuart Shepherd interviewed the FLI attorney Nate Talon concerning Gabriel Olivier of Brandon, Mississippi. Gabe is a small business owner who takes the Bible seriously when it says, "Go into all the world and share the good news of Jesus Christ." National April Faith Month action organization shares the same passion to worship and express outside the church buildings into public spaces, including the Banshell stage, so all will be welcomed to know him, not just private church groups in a grass area. Mr. Olivier was sharing the message of Christ in a public park in a city amphitheater. He was told he had to move according to the ordinance, three hundred feet away called a free zone, speech zone, a limited area. He knew he had a constitutional right to freely speak in public areas, so he turned to his, returned to his original spot. The chief of police arrived, and there was civil discussion, but Mr. Olivier stood up for his rights, therefore was arrested for violating the ordinance. He paid the fine, called First Liberty, and they gave him a local pro bono attorney to represent him. The courts denied him the right to appeal because Mr. Olivier pleaded no contest. Apparently, Louisiana has a law, Heck versus Humphrey, for prisoners who plead no contest, that they lose their chance to appeal their day in court. The judge applied the same law to Mr. Olivier, and he was unlawfully unable to challenge the ordinance and have his day in court. Allison Holm is a top-tier, superior litigator and has previous experiences with cases at the Supreme Court level. She is highly skilled in taking Mr. Olivier's case pro bono. If you remember, Taylor Birchfield, officer of First Liberty, said they win ninety percent of their cases. Mr. Olivier will have his day in court. Colin Park Banshell stage was dedicated to Henry Vanderlinde, a veteran, love music, God, and country. Why would the city manager and Department of Parks and Recreation withhold a Christian worship on the Banshell stage? From what I was told from a department here in the city, they made the policy revision themselves. Counsel, did you know this? Did you approve it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Terry D. Young, City of Holland. July is Disability Pride Month, and I'm here to offer a commendation and an invitation. As a person with a disability, thank you for the proclamation on tonight's agenda. I want to highlight just a few portions of it. Whereas on July twenty-six, nineteen ninety, President George H. W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. Whereas the ADA legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Whereas we recognize that those individuals that champion the Americans with Disabilities Act, like Ed Roberts, Judy Hume, Bob Williams, Justin Dar, it's actually Justin Dart, Lydia X. Z. Brown, and the many family and community advocates throughout Holland. And whereas, as a city, we recognize and applaud the work of local organizations like Disability Network Lake Shore, Brothers and Sisters Homes, Benjamin's Hopes, Benjamin's Hope, Arc Advocacy and Resource Center, and the many nonprofits that provide and address the needs of our people with disabilities and their families. Now, therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland and members of the Holland City Council, proclaim July twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, as the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and urge all Holland-relevant residents to elevate the voices of people with disabilities and participate in the ADA thirty-fifth anniversary celebration at Moran Park on July twenty-six, from noon to four P. M., and invite the community to attend and elevate the voices, the voice of persons with disabilities. Disability Network Lake Shore is hosting that ADA celebration on July twenty-six at Moran Park, so here comes the invitation. As the current Board President of Disability Network Lake Shore, I hope to see each and every one of you there sometime between noon and four P. M. It's a free, family-friendly event that will feature food, music, games, community resource tables. Thank you to you, the City of Holland, and the Human Relations Commission for actually being a sponsor of this celebration. And thank you to city staff for producing an excellent four-minute YouTube video on Disability Pride. That video features Disability Network and our Executive Director Amanda Ryan's Pullman. I hope you have watched it. On behalf of Disability Network, we extend our thanks to the city for its support and commitment to becoming a fully accessible and welcoming community. There is still work to be done, but you are a great partner in working toward that improvement. And the ongoing work of becoming a more accessible and welcoming community is actually a big part of what drove me to apply for membership on the Human Relations Commission. My first term ended sixteen days ago, on July, on June thirty, and I am still waiting for confirmation that I will be reappointed for a second term. And yes, that's a less than subtle hint to Mayor Box that I'm still waiting for that to happen, which feels particularly timely since the Human Relations Commission meets in these chambers tomorrow evening. In any case, whether I'm appointed for a second term or not, thank you for the work of accessibility and welcome toward people with disabilities.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Linda Falstad, and I live in the city of Holland for a long time, and I'm happy to be here, and thank you for being here tonight. This evening, I'm here as a member of the Holland Museum, and I just have one simple request, if you would please consider a study session on July twenty-third to thoroughly examine the museum millage proposal. And let me share why this deserves your careful consideration. Last year, the museum directly served over twenty thousand people. They hosted fifty unique in-house programs, from Day of the Dead to Marvel Mania to Women Lighthouse Keepers, I would love to be one of those, to the Capon House one hundred and fiftieth celebration. The Spark Lab engaged over twenty-five hundred students in STEM activities. There were forty-five community tours with over twelve hundred adults and students participating, forty-nine community appearances that reached over six thousand people, including parades, the International Festival, Fiesta Pride, Juneteenth, Farmer's Market. But when you add on the school tours and the educational component that the Holland Museum provides to our community, those numbers grow. My children were all able to go and learn about the history of Holland, because I'm not from Holland, Michigan, and my children and I together were able to learn about that history, and it was valuable when my third graders came home to teach me. And now I have my grandchildren, who in the third grade had the opportunity to tour the Holland Museum and learn about the history of Holland, Michigan, and how it's changed in the years that their parents went through the same tour. You know, I want to share the fact that my granddaughter and I were able to go to the Victorian tea at the Holland Museum's Capon House, it was just a wonderful event. We dressed up for the event, it was fun. And without a millage that will help all of us enjoy the Holland Museum and all the benefits to the community and our educational value for our children, we need you to consider this July twenty-third meeting. So that's what I'm asking for tonight, that you would consider a study session on July twenty-third, where we could present the full picture about the financials, the millage proposal, and how, for most of us, it'd be less than twenty-five dollars a year per household to preserve this vital community asset. So I would ask that you would kindly consider this session. Numbers show that we're just not nice to have, that we're essential for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Deb Wake, and I'm with the City of Holland. I'm here tonight in supporting placing the museum and millage on the November ballot. I enjoyed a twenty-five-year career as a manager at the Henry Ford Museum in Greenfield Village in Dearborn. I retired in twenty twenty and moved to beautiful Holland and discovered the museum and the historic properties. I was so impressed with the dedicated staff and the amazing collection that in twenty twenty-two, I applied for a job there. I just retired last March. I continue to work part-time as a tour manager for students, adults, and senior groups in Michigan as well as out of state, and I can speak for the fact that museums are key to tourism in any area. And visitors are always impressed when they come to the museum at the scope of our collection. At a fully accredited Holland Museum, I had the privilege of working with a remarkable team of staff and volunteers, where I facilitated the ed programs, the tours, and the special events. The museum team works tirelessly to collect tens of thousands of artifacts, create amazing programs, and share stories that inspire school-aged audiences and visitors, and provide a catalyst for our families to share their memories. The museum preserves the stories of the Nitschun Abe and our Dutch founders, as well as the richly diverse population we share today in Holland. The museum is a true beacon to the, I'm sorry, to the community pride, and that we cannot afford to lose that. I'm getting very emotional, sorry. I believe that twenty-five dollars a year is not a steep cost to ensure the institution for generations to come, and I think the citizens of Holland deserve the right to decide this for themselves in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Claire Hybor, I'm a resident of Holland Township. I'm here, I am here to support placing the museum millage on the November ballot. I've lived a good life here in West Michigan. My children and my grandchildren love to hear my stories over and over again, and if I could have more than five minutes, I'd love to share a few with you as well. Maybe not tonight. Everyone in this room and in this community have stories to tell. The museum collects stories from everyone in this community. At less than twenty-five dollars per household per year, let's invest to ensure our children and grandchildren can hear the stories and preserve the local history of Holland, Michigan. Please vote to let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I'm Fred Johnson, I live in Holland. It's been said that a people not knowing their history cannot know themselves properly. I modify that to say, if you don't know your story, you can't own your glory. I'm here to support putting the Holland Museum on the November millage, and also to back up what's already been said. I work with the Holland Museum, I've done presentations there, I'm a professor at Hope College, professor of history at Hope College, and I can speak clearly and definitively that the museum has been a great help to my students in learning their historical, in doing historical study, and teaching them to think critically, giving them opportunities for internships, helping them to understand what it is, although like referencing Linda's grandchildren, although some of them sometimes do act like three-year-olds, they nevertheless are fully intent on learning to become good researchers, good writers, and good thinkers. There's the Dutch Galleries there, which has been a major collection there for a long time, that's of value to the community. As Holland has diversified, the museum has taken steps to diversify with the different changes in the community, the demographics, and beyond that, the museum has shown an ability to attract speakers and presenters from beyond Holland itself, from across the country. Michael Dama came down from Washington, D. C., where he teaches at George Washington University, to present some interesting information on Dutch history. So the fact that the museum is like the Holland Civil War muster, it's starting to draw beyond itself, shows the kind of imprint that it's leaving here. I encourage you all to please support putting that on the November ballot as a millage. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is special presentations and recognitions from the mayor or council or city manager. State tribute to firefighter and police officer of the year Angela Lowndes for Fire Services and Spencer Slink, Police Services, by State Representative Nancy DeBor. Mr. Van Beek.
And I think we have our state representative here, but I also see our state senator here, and I have a feeling maybe this will be a tag-team duty, so why don't you?
You are correct there.
All right, come on up.
You're a great city manager, you have great perspective.
Welcome to you both.
That's questionable.
That's questionable sometimes, Roger.
You have the podium and the microphone.
Thank you. So Spencer, would you mind coming up? Spencer Slink and Angela Loud, would you may mind coming up, please? It's such an honor to be here tonight. This thing doesn't bend like it used to. Thank you, sir. It's such an honor to be able to come here tonight to honor these two amazing people. A city can have values, and public safety can have its core values and what it stands for and how it wants to serve the community, how it wants to protect the community, but unless we have people that live those values, we don't have anything. I'm sure if you would ask people, what's your main thing, what do you want in the city of Holland, what would, what would be your main value, and I think many of them would respond, safety. In the world that we live in today, it's just means so much when you can go to the park and enjoy it, and when you can walk downtown and not be afraid, and when you can play at the playground, at the, at the school, and all is good. That doesn't happen easily, and underneath everything that we enjoy are a lot of hours of sweat and tears and hard work that you both in your departments put in for us. So I'm here to say thank you, but it's just a little tiny thing to try to, try to encapsulate how we feel about what you do and your dedication. So Angela, we wanted to talk about you as being the firefighter of the year twenty-twenty-five, and you-
Let's give a round of applause on that.
Yes, she was nominated by her coworkers and selected to receive this award for protecting lives and property of others. You have an amazing background, Angela. You've also been a reserve officer with the police department, and you worked for the BPW. It's like everywhere you go, you are a citizen and unselfish, always thinking of helping others, and that is such an inspiring thing in the world today. I looked up your name, Angela, and it means angel messenger. I'm sure that's what they think when you pull up in the truck or when you come to try to save someone who's choking or whatever you're asked to do, that you are an angel messenger, and that you are a bringer of good tidings. So I appreciate too your background in chemical engineering. In today's world, firefighting is not simply sticks and fire. We have batteries and all kinds of things that complicate that, so a background like that is so important to our department. And your master's in science and kinesiology, all your credits for firefighter one and two, EMT, FFTC instructor, instructor one, which I don't even know what it is, but it sounds important, and you're instructing it. Yes, you sound that too. Yeah, so it's great. And the Heart Safe Community you've been in charge of, and we were one of the first two in the country to get that designation. Very early, yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate all your hard work, and I have a certificate for you, and Roger would like to say a few words, and I'll hold the microphone for you, sir.
Wait, wait, make sure Angela's here.
Yep.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you to both of you, and it's, you know, when we were working in Lansing and we see, you know, doing the work there, we know that we have special people back here in the district making it, making our job all the easier in Lansing, and you're on the forefront of it. And also, it's, why is our community growing? I mean, we have, we have good issues here, and that's our population growth, and I think you are key to that there too, making a welcome community, a safe community, and all those things. So thank you for being a part of the team to make, you know, West Michigan a special place and the city of Holland also a special place. Thank you. And with that there, let's deliver the hardware.
And, thank you. I know you're such a great team player, thank you. Next, we have Spencer Slink, Officer Slink. He is an amazing person, having been decided by the command staff, being the police officer of the year for twenty-twenty-five. He went to Grand Valley and became a police academy grad there. He became a police officer back in twenty-nineteen. He just graduated from Holland Christian in twenty-fifteen. Oh my goodness, yeah, and you've already been a field training officer and an honor guard, a technical team member, recruiting team person, you've been a mentor to many, a field trainer. I just hear such great things about who you are as a person, inspiring other people to live up to standards that are, are really hard. It's really hard to be nice when people are mean to you, or when you're doing something like arresting someone, no one likes that. Nobody says, hey, thanks for coming by. It's very hard, and, and you do that with such professionalism and dedication. You communicate respect, you treat other people with respect, and you build the reputation of an amazing department. So we are so grateful. Your name means a dispenser of provisions, a faithful steward. That's exactly you. We're so thankful for all that you have done in helping our community and in making it the kind of place that everybody wants to call home. Thank you so much, Spencer. Oh, and I forgot, you have a promotion in August as sergeant, Spencer. So that is very cool.
Is that official already?
Yeah, yes.
Well, let's give a round of applause on that. And I'll just repeat what I said too, thank you for making our community something special. As a former Chair of Judiciary and Public Safety Committee in Lansing, knowing firsthand how important our, our frontline folks are in our law enforcement and the task. It's not an easy task, we appreciate, and a big thank you on behalf of the state of Michigan and also from the thirty-first Senate District. And with that there, Spencer, let's present you with the hardware, soon to be sergeant, Spencer.
Yes.
Congratulations and thank you both, Representative DeBoer and Senator Victory, we appreciate that. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to address us in person at our meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send written communications that will reach all council members. That is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. When we receive those, we accept those into the record at our regular meetings. We do not read them out loud at the meetings, but we do accept them into the record. We do not have any at this meeting, but I do like to make sure that the public knows that that email address is out there. Once again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda, item number twelve, twelve C one, proposed resolution approving Headley override ballot proposal, Mr. Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm going to put this slide up here while I do an introduction. It's a slide that council is very familiar with, and you're very familiar with it because this is not a new conversation. This is something that I think, as I look over to Lynn, I think we've been talking about this and preparing for this for many, many years. We have a situation, and I'm going to try to kind of give the short explanation using the graph as, as assistance, right, where we have a city charter limit that says we, that you as council can levy up to seventeen point five mils as a tax rate. And that's again in our charter, going back many, 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 many years. The reality though is that we have had a situation, and that seventeen point five is depicted by the black line across the top. The teal bar graph, I think I get my color right there, right, is depicted along the bottom, and you see a very consistent and steady tax rate that actually has been levied by city council for years. And you might say, well, Keith, I see in two thousand eleven and two thousand eight that maybe it was a little bit lower, and there's some complexity there as it relates to changes with millages. What I will say is that for fourteen years, you've levied the same amount of tax rate, which is thirteen point eight six nine two. And council, you know that we also have been preparing for years, we've done a long-term financial plan, which again, we do a lot of work on, almost constantly, and we make sure that we come back to you and speak to you about it. At the very least, two times a year, and quite frankly, probably four or five times a year, we reference where we are and how we are doing with our long-term financial You know that from that long-term financial plan, we have indicated, and you have made it your priority annually, that you have no interest in raising the tax rate that's levied, and that we feel that there is not a need to raise the tax rate that's levied at thirteen point eight six nine two. So why are we bringing this in front of you? Because there is a somewhat known set of laws and rules out of Lansing, it's called the Headley Amendment, that's existed since the nineteen eighties, where in small increments every year, we actually have to by law roll back that seventeen point five mils in small amounts, that instead of having the council allowed maximum levy of seventeen point five mils, you are now to fourteen point four four seven nine, not to be exact or anything. If it would always stay at fourteen point four four seven nine, or at least for the foreseeable future, we would say we're okay. Here's the problem, what you can see in that orange line is that because of a variety of factors, it is accelerating in how much it's being rolled back. And we need to, from a staff recommendation, as you know, because we've been talking about this for multiple years, this is not a new item, that we really need to get relief from that rollback amount before the orange line crosses the teal bar graph. Because at that point, we would be in a situation where the services that you've heard a lot about tonight would immediately begin to be impacted because we would not be able to levy the same amount of a tax rate and thus collect the amount of taxes that we get each year. Not even talking about some increases because values of properties increase, but if the rate drops, we're going to, we're going to start losing money year on, year after year. So again, as you know, sorry for the longer introduction, but this is not a new topic. It's something that we've talked about, it's been a council priority, it's part of our long, long-range financial plan. We've had discussion that we don't want to wait until it actually becomes a immediate critical issue, or be put in a situation of, well, vote for this or else services are going to be cut. So we wanted to be out in front of it. But it's also a complicated topic, and I'm going to go to the next slide a second. And if anyone wants to read that and say, oh, that makes perfect sense, I understand exactly what that means, we'll understand. City Attorney Vince Duckworth, that's not a criticism of the work that you have to do on our behalf, that is the reality of how ballot language needs to be written. That ballot language actually only asked voters, which would, which we're recommending that you put on the November ballot, that it would reset that fourteen point four four seven nine back to seventeen point five mils, and it would only grant you the ability to levy a higher tax rate. You've indicated very clearly, and you and councils before you have demonstrated by your actions that you're not increasing the tax rate, but it's pretty hard to lead, read the language in front of you and not make it seem like you're asking people to raise their taxes. I know that I'm talking to, you know, the choir here, that that's not the intent, but that's the complicated message that's in front of you. And it's not without challenge. So with that introduction, maybe kind of getting ahead of myself a little bit, but because I know you're very aware of and comfortable with what this is, this is a recommendation from staff and from me as your city manager, that you would take action this evening and authorize this to be placed on the November ballot, which would address this issue that is in our future unless it's taken care of. And again, in effect, this only raises the amount that you may levy. It does not raise the amount without other action available to council to actually increase the, the rate that's actually levied. And with that, Lynn McCammon is here, that can explain financial matters in better detail than I. Vince Duckworth obviously is here, that can answer legal questions better than I, but that is our recommendation. Thank you.
Questions for staff? I have a couple, Keith, if, if others don't. The seventeen point five mils comes from city charter?
That's correct.
And the city charter for, for the people listening at home is like our constitution, right? That's, that is our guiding document, that was, that's not something we came up with, that's something that was come up, came up with a long time ago.
And at that, and voted upon by the citizens to establish that charter.
Okay, so people, so that's the maximum that we are allowed to tax, but we haven't, we have not levied that rate or anywhere near that rate for fourteen years.
We've never levied that rate that I'm aware, we've kept the same rate for fourteen years, and we've kept basically the same rate, I'm going to say, with slight, slight adjustments for, for what I can tell, for three decades.
Okay, so, and there, none, no, I'm just going to, I'm looking up and down the dais here, no member of this council has been here for fourteen years? No. And, and there are only two members that are here that have been here longer than I have, that, I'm just, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but I don't, I don't think any of us have ever voted to raise the millage rate, have we?
Certainly not.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think anybody at this dais, I'm just trying to reinforce that point that you were making, Keith, that, that this body doesn't have any, any intention or of raising the millage rate barring some unforeseen circumstance, that's not what we're asking for here. But can you go back one slide? The problem that we have coming down the line is the orange line hitting the teal bars, that the teal bar that you can see that is exactly the same, the fourteen teal bars in a row are the exact same millage rate that we as the Holland City Council and the city councils that came before us said is the appropriate amount to, to levy for the people of the city of Holland. Yeah, Scott's counting, I'm sorry, Mr. Corbin's counting over here to make sure that it's, that it is exactly fourteen, I appreciate you checking me on that, Mr. Corbin. So for fourteen years in a row, the city council, city councils before us have said that's the appropriate rate. Every other year, we do a citizen survey and, and represent, and citizens have said they're, they're pretty happy with the, they're pretty happy with the services that we provide. I also want to make sure the public knows, we balance the budget every single year. We are planners, we make sure that we are, we are good stewards of the, of the dollars of the people of the city of Holland. The problem that we see coming, because we are planners, is that we don't know exactly when, and this is part of the problem, but likely within the next few years, that orange line is going to hit the teal bars and is going to go below the teal bars, and we are going to lose the ability at this dais to decide what the appropriate amount- And we are going to lose the ability at this dais to decide what the appropriate amount to levy is going to be. We are going to be forced to reduce that amount, and we will no longer be able to decide. We, the people that have been elected by the people of the city of Holland, will no longer have the, the control and the decision-making authority to decide what the appropriate amount of, of taxation is and what the appropriate amount of services are for the people of the city of Holland. That's the, I guess, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm asking that question of, that's, that's our problem. Is that correct, Mr. Van Beek? That, 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 that we see that that orange bar is gonna hit the teal bar?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I guess that's my, that's my question there. Mr. Shea?
I think I'm reiterating, but just that I can get it out of my brain, two questions. Will this, would this action result in higher taxes?
This action in and of itself, no, would not result in higher taxes.
Thank you. Second question. If we were to not on, act on this, would we foresee services having to decrease in time eventually?
In time, if this doesn't get fixed, yes, it will decrease service levels.
Thanks, Keith.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah. Quincy? No, Mr. Corbin?
So, I understand we can't handcuff the future councils. That's, that's not what we're doing here today. We're looking at the current, yeah, we're currently looking at where we stand today. And if I look at the graph, it's more than fourteen years we've been good stewards, right? Seventeen years showing here and even before. We could've went up to seventeen mils many years ago, and we didn't do it. So we've been very good stewards for a long period of time. That's historical precedence that we're showing as not only this council, but previous councils, and my hope is future councils. So I think, I'm looking at that as an important tie to how we communicate this to the voters about how responsible we are, not only as a council, but we as a city are, right? The staff, the personnel, but the constituents alike. We all are pitching in, helping out where we can to keep those taxes low. There's a lot of volunteer programs. We do a lot together as a community, and that's what's contributed to this. And I don't see that changing anytime soon. And I hope that if we consider this, if there's true consideration passing this today moving forward, that we can continue to communicate that to the public. At least where we stand historically and where we currently stand, and that the, the great community support we have in keeping those numbers low and keeping the expenditures low enough that we don't have any reason to believe that those taxes are gonna go up. So I think this is a real important issue for us today, to address today, because it will become a real big issue going forward. And big, tough decisions will have to be made with our parks, our public safety, administrative services. There's a lot of things to consider here if we can't fix this problem today.
And, and I wanna be, I wanna make sure careful, because I, I danced right up to that line too. We're asking questions of staff at this point. We don't have a motion on the, on the floor.
Is that correct, Mr. Van Beek?
Mayor and council, you can ask questions and commentary.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. I just, I just wanna make sure we're, we're sticking within rubber tacks as best as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Mr. Van Beek, I'm just, uh, put in another language as well. If we don't do this, we would be forced to make other decisions in a negative manner versus may continue to influence and control and do a good job of what we're doing today, what's been granted to us.
Yes, and I will expand upon that, Mr. Freeman, where I would say, if you, I'm hypothesizing a little bit. If you would say, no, we don't wanna put this on the ballot, and/or it would go on the ballot and the voters would reject it, it won't take Lynn, McCammon and I very long to say, we need to start preparing for this eventuality. And I probably would start recommending a freeze on, or maybe even start considering and presenting to you options of starting to cut back services before we even financially had to. And why? Because I've inherited a culture of that's the way you do things to prepare for those types of challenges before you get to that point. So do someone speculated, and it's impossible to speculate, like how, when does the orange line cross the teal bar? Don't, don't ask Lynn or I to say this is the year that it's gonna hit. I do think it's at least a couple years out, but if this wouldn't move forward, we'd start taking actions to that before the, the lines crossed.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, Mr. Corbin?
Mr. Mayor, this time it's a question. So Keith, because it will be a question, I think the constituents will ask, is there a reserve set aside that we can delay this for any period of time? Do we have reserve funds that we can say, let's kick this down the road a little bit further?
Yeah, so we have both a fund balance and a budget stabilization fund. And those are set aside, and you can hear it in the, in the terms that we use, right? That are prepared to stabilize services in unintended or unimagined times so that you don't have a volatility in the services that the citizens expect us to provide. So do we have that in place? Yes. Should we have that in place? Yes. But as your manager, I would not say that that would be something that we say, oh, then we can kick that down the road and not address a problem that we have. Because I would say those are there primarily for other unforeseen circumstances that you see happen across the nation all the time. So I would begin to get extremely uneasy if we went beyond, below those recommended levels, because we were not addressing a core issue such as this.
Right, I guess a follow-up on that. That's a good financial practice that we're, we're committed to. And even if we were to use those funds, the following year, we'd have to consider creating those same funds for that same purpose, correct?
Correct. I mean, basically, you're talking about the financial principle of the difference between ongoing funds and one-time-use funds. Fund balance and budget stabilization, you use them once and they're gone, whereby a millage rate, the amount, that's an amount that is a year upon year, it can generate funds that then you can base your operations based upon those.
And one last follow-up, capital improvement fund. We have a separate fund for that too. Can you explain to the public how we use our capital improvement fund and what it's in, it's intended to do as well?
Absolutely. We also have a very developed process. We call it the municipal capital improvement fund. On the consent agenda, you actually saw very good use of that fund this evening, where we're early in our fiscal year, it's only the second meeting in our fiscal year. So you had multiple items that were budgeted, that were in our capital improvement fund for multiple years that we were working towards, that we have used our existing funds to make sure that we set aside those funds in our municipal capital improvement funds. And why? So we can make sure that we have vehicles for our police officers, which we recognize tonight, that we could have new defibrillator equipment that we provided to support our, our heart-safe initiatives for our firefighters that we recognize tonight. So we have planned also for that, that we can keep up with, and we feel we're in good shape with providing for the capital and equipment needs of the city. But again, those are one-time needs, so those, quite frankly, are some of the first things that would start falling off if we were to run into problems such as is outlined in the graph in front of you.
So what I'm hearing you say, it's, it's a life cycle. Equipment has life cycles and they deteriorate to a point where they have to be replaced. And the capital improvement fund does that, but also maintains our buildings and things that we depend upon as a community. So I, I think it's important for us to note that we, that's another fund, that if we do fund it, it can't be used, well, I, I shouldn't say that. I just wanna make sure people understand how that fund is used and why it's been being used. So thank you for clarification.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Byrd?
So you, you touched on a little bit. We, we have been talking about this for an extensive period of time. During this time, we have spoken, we've said our services, right, would be impacted. I, I, I guess for me, I would like for the public to understand what that means, right? Does that mean, um, you touched a little bit about the funds, it'll impact those funds. What else would that impact? Would that impact my everyday, the parks, roads? What, 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 what are some of the things that that would impact? Because I think that gives them the information that they really need to understand how important this is.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Quincy. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say one thing first, just as a reminder, because I don't want this to be too much of a, oh, this is a problem immediately tomorrow if we don't fix it.
Right.
Because we're bringing this in front of you, where if we, if we take care of this, it'll be invisible to people.
Right.
Why do I use the term invisible to people? I'm gonna tell you that hopefully I and most of our staff members, the reality is being recognized for being a police officer of the year or firefighter, fighter of the year makes us uncomfortable. Because I'm gonna tell you that most of your city employees actually like being invisible. We like being invisible, Mr. Byrd, because basically the reason we exist is, yes, we provide services, but there's not a lot of fluff in those services where there's things that we do that don't do one thing. They positively impact the citizens of the city of Holland. So to answer your question more directly, no, as, as soon as we would have to start making cuts to services, it's not so much we're making cuts to services. We're making cuts to citizens in things that we provide that provide safety in police and fire services. That provides safety in transportation options and roads. That provide quality of life in our parks and recreation departments. That's what you all know, that's what we do here. There's not really much after those types of things. So I think that answers your question.
It does. Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. The other thing is, like you said, this isn't right now, right? This speaks to, and I, I, I don't, I don't know how many communities are evaluating this right now, right? This speaks to the planning that goes in place that has always happened here in Holland. We stay ahead of the curve. We are always looking in advance how to take care of the community the best that we can. So that, that's, that's why we're bringing it up so early, and I appreciate that.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Schultheis and then Ms. Sol.
Thanks. Keith, is it a fair characterization that the, the orange line, that's the limitation that's on us? It, it only goes down, so it's a, it's an inevitable matter that it's going to hit the teal. There's not a scenario where we wait or hope that the line turns, so that this would be a question of when do we take this action versus if we should take this action? Is that fair?
I absolutely agree with that statement. There is nothing in state law, as much as it's been talked about, that allows for that orange line to go back up. It only goes down. This is the only act, to clarify, this is the only action for the citizens to override, thus the Headley override vote, to reset that orange line to what the citizens originally said was the millage cap.
Ms. Sol?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate, so by, um, in, uh, putting this on the ballot in November, the citizens get to, they should vote yes to avoid, um, losing any services, because that could be a little overwhelming. But again, the city is being proactive because that's what we do to rock, to provide the best services for our constituents and our residents, correct?
Yes, a yes vote for this, if it goes on the ballot, would correct a pending issue that would hit us, that would result in, um, a cuts in services.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, it's follow-up to Ms. Sol's question. So as she mentioned, that right now, if, if not passing, it, it would impact the, the current conditions. Well, right now, if they pass it, the conditions that we have right now and the services we have right now will remain the same. And that's under the, the power of the people right now to make that decision. If it were not to pass, it becomes the responsibility of us to make that decision for everybody else. I just wanted to clarify that, right? And I, I hope that, or I guess, I just wanna make sure it's a question first. I was getting ready to make a statement, I shouldn't do that.
May I put that in form of a question?
Those governors' officers should know that we can't make statements during this time, so it's a question.
Yes, if the orange line hits the teal line, then there are things that we do right now for the citizens that you'll have to make choices for, that you can't possibly go back to, to citizens in the ballot box and say, cut A, B, or C, or D, E, and F. At that point, you would need to make those difficult decisions.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead. Ms. Rowan?
I feel the need to ask a question since I'm the only person here who hasn't asked a question. Have we missed any questions? That need to be answered?
That was, that was good.
Um, I mean, so just to, we had a lot of stuff going on, but I think the idea is we are all trying to educate the public on a very complicated verbiage and concept, which it took us, you know, a little time to wrap ourselves around. Have we missed any questions that are important for us to ask you? And then can you reiterate or can you confirm this is not a vote to raise any taxes at this moment? Thank you.
No, I do not believe that you're missing any questions. I will twist that a little bit and say the difficulty is, there's so many questions to make something really complicated, and in some ways is just really easy. It's just hard to make things like this that are kinda really easy, but it reads and it sounds complicated. That's a challenge. And I think we all need to realize that that's a real, a real challenge that would need to be addressed. And yes, you are correct, and I will answer your question, that the action that you are recommended to take tonight, first of all, only puts a question on the ballot. First of all. So that in and of itself does not raise the tax rate. Then though, if the citizens of Holland would vote to approve it, it should be clearly understood that that also does not raise people's taxes. It would only be a future vote of a council to raise the tax rate that would raise the tax rate of the people. And I think you've all demonstrated in your actions and in your words that that's not the intent of what you're trying to achieve, and it's certainly not what staff is recommending or feels needs to happen, that we actually need to increase the rate. We just need to increase the maximum amount that can be levied before the orange line hits the teal bar.
Any other questions for staff? What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve?
Move, uh, motion by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan. Any discussion? Mr. Schultheis?
Yeah, statement time.
Yes, absolutely.
Two points that I wanna underscore for our team is one, Keith and Lynn, thank you. The, the look ahead and long-term financial planning of the city staff allows us to consider this without urgency and crisis. consider this without urgency and crisis. So that's fantastic. And two, I know that in study sessions, we talked, talked about and looked at the Frost Center's resident survey results that clearly showed the majority of the residents of the city do not want a reduction in services. That's it.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? Mr. Byrd?
Yes, um, I, you know, I, I agree 100% what, what you're saying. And looking at this right here, the proposed verbiage, it is still like, right, I'm walking through a flower field in, in, uh, brick shoes, right? Almost, it, it's just, it's, for the common person, it's, it's hard to understand. We have had the luxury of sitting and talking about this for quite some time. I don't know, this is a heavy lift to present this to the community to the point where they understand that this, this is beneficial to us as a whole. I don't know if we have, and I probably should have asked this question before, um, or I, I guess, how do we do that? How do we, do we have something in place? Are we using a PR group? Are we, are we doing everything, I believe you're doing everything you can to maximize to get this out there.
I, I can answer that question. As, as the, as the city government, the, the city only has the ability to provide information about it, cannot advocate one way or the other. Tax dollars cannot be used to advocate one way or the other, but simply to inform. If an independent group wanted to advocate one way or the other, that could happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Any other discussion?
Mr. Corbin?
My last word is, I'm just giving the opportunity for the citizens to speak on this issue. So I'll be voting in support of this, making sure it gets on the ballot. I want them to be able to have a voice on this.
Any other discussion? I of course have words on this, because this is, this is, I think, I know it's surprising, isn't it? It's really surprising. Um, we, we talk about the budget being one of the, being the most important thing that we do. Um, this is about the most important thing that we do for the next year after year after year after year after year. It's about maintaining that local control um, so that the people of the city of Holland, we as the representatives of the people of the city of Holland have the ability to continue to make decisions for the people of the city of Holland. Um, I think when people watch TV and listen to the radio, that they're not used to seeing and experiencing well-run government. You know, when you watch what's going on in Washington, and maybe when you watch what's going on in Lansing, you think to yourself, they're, they're not balancing budgets, they're not getting along well, they're not doing things well. Um, that's not the case here in Holland, Michigan, as we have been talking about when we talk about this. We in Holland are planners. We look forward, we look ahead to what's coming, as has been said at this dais. We are not doing this with a sense of urgency. We are doing this because we have looked far down the road and seen this coming, and we wanna make sure that the people of the city of Holland have the opportunity to be able to address this issue along with us and make a calm, measured, informed decision about what they believe and what we believe is right for the people of the city of Holland moving forward. Um, we have always been very good stewards of the tax dollars for the people of the city of Holland, where other levels of government do not balance budgets. We do every year, and in fact, we often have money left over at the end of the year because we have an incredible staff that is not interested in spending all of the money that's in their budget every single year. They are looking for ways to be able to save money and do things better, which provides more opportunities for good services for the people of the city of Holland. And as you said, Mr. Schultheis, we ask the people of the city of Holland how we're doing. Um, and while we as council are almost okay, our city staff tends to get incredibly high marks in what they are providing for the people of the city of Holland. And it's our job to continue to be good stewards. This is not about raising taxes. This is about preventing the artificial lowering of the tax rate for the people of the city of Holland. It's about taking away the control and the decision-making ability of the people of the city of Holland. Quincy, I have no idea what walking through a field of flowers with cement shoes means. I don't at all. But I completely agree with you that when you look at this ballot language, it is almost indecipherable, and I've been a lawyer for 33 years. I read this language and I went, oh my goodness, how are we going to explain this?
Flowers don't survive.
Flowers don't survive when you're walking in cement shoes, is that what that is? Okay, I'll, I'll still try to think through that. That's, I'm not sure if that's any easier to understand than this ballot language is. This ballot language is difficult and complicated, but it's what we are stuck with, with the state law. And so we are going to have to do a very good job between now, if we, if we pass this, between now and November, in trying to inform the people of the city of Holland about what this means, that it does not mean we are asking to raise taxes. It does not mean they are voting to raise taxes. It does not mean that if this passes, we will be asking to raise taxes. What this means is we are asking to be able to retain local control, local decision-making, and not having some arcane rule from Lansing artificially require us to reduce services on the people of the city of Holland. And Quincy asked about what services are gonna be, gonna be reduced, and Mr. Van Beek, you did an amazing job of, of saying that kind of across the board, but I also wanna rec- make sure that the people of the city of Holland know. We did, we had the firefighter of the year, when you had the police officer of the year. 50% of our general fund budget is police and fire. I don't want to have to reduce police and fire budgets. I certainly don't wanna have to reduce parks budgets. I certainly do not wanna have to reduce road budgets. I don't wanna have to reduce budgets for the people of the city of Holland, because I think that we do provide the right level of services for the people of the city of Holland. We're doing this now because we've got time, because we plan, that's what we do. We mentioned the capital, municipal capital improvement plan, that is a 50-year, five-zero municipal capital improvement plan. That's how we plan in the city of Holland. We have a 10, five, 10, 15-year, why am I, why am I all of a sudden doing it, the? Uh, no, income, long-term financial forecast, thank you, long-term financial forecast. We are thinking ahead about where our money is going to be coming from. Governments don't do that, but we do here in the city of Holland. We plan on where our money is gonna be coming from, we plan on where our money is gonna be going to, so that we can be good stewards and make good decisions and provide good services for the people of the city of Holland. I am definitely gonna be voting yes for this because I want this council and I want future councils to be able to make the decisions for the people of the city of Holland and not have that decision-making power taken away from us. Matt, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schultheis?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 12, Echo 3.1, approval of ice park fees and charges. Mr. Van Beek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, you'll see that we have several parks and recreation employees in the audience this evening, but tonight I'm gonna ask Garrett Thalen to come on up. I think he's starting it, right Andy? And, uh, if you haven't been able to tell, there is an elevated amount of excitement about our ice park. And in spite of the conversation that we just had, we are still investing in providing for, um, the community. Um, so tonight, um, Garrett is making some recommendations that go in what we call our fee book that provides a range of what we are able to charge uh, for fees and charges at the ice park that will be up and operational per Matt Van Dyken, um, and ready for skating this winter. So Garrett, I do wanna just say thank you very much to you and your team for doing an unbelievable amount of work of just getting prepared for this, much less come when the time comes, open it up and seeing a lot of smiling faces, so take it away.
Yeah, thank you, we're looking forward to it. I know everyone here is as well. So this isn't necessarily a new process, um, but it usually, as Keith mentioned, that it goes through the fees and charges book, and I just wanted to back up one step as we go through this. Um, I know it seems kind of odd talking about the ice park when it's 90 degrees outside, but we have to get this into our program guide, uh, by the end of the month, we're hoping, so yeah, we wanna be able to include this stuff, and it needs your approval to be able to do so. So for parks and rec program pricing as a whole, uh, we always operate and we get, uh, price ranges approved, so that way we can have some flexibility based on certain costs. Um, sometimes that book needs to be approved, our fees need to be approved about 18 months before a program might run. So that provides our, us with the ability to still be able to run a program, but it might need to be at a higher rate, uh, due to instructor costs. Um, that's just kind of the nature of what it's been. Things have gotten better, but obviously COVID was a rough time for us as the part-time labor shifted around quite a bit. And so our department is, something that we're really proud of, is been able to keep prices pretty much the lowest in the area. We're either at the same level as the lowest, or we are the lowest, so that's something that we are very excited to be able to offer for our community, as, as I mentioned there, accessibility is always top of mind. Um, that picture there has nothing to do with anything other than I wanted to show it to you. Um, yeah, our junior adventure team was, is doing a great job this year. And that's at Maplewood Park, where we were able to have the fire department come out and, uh, hose down the kids because it was, again, 90 some degrees that day, so it was awesome. So open skate, so this is the main thing that's gonna be happening at the ice park. And so pricing details, it, again, you'll see that range, it's $5 to $10 per participant. I really wanna hit home that it's mostly going to be $10. I don't wanna act like we're selling something that we're not. It's, it's likely gonna be $10, uh, upon your approval. And those are gonna be for 90-minute sessions, and uh, the rental is considered complimentary. This was at recommendations from, I visited about, and the team visited about six other ice rinks in the Midwest. And that's a pretty common practice, um, it creates an ease of booking, and it creates us with the ability to kinda move, uh, long lines pretty quickly at the, at the ice, uh, window as well, so that was one of the things that we are gonna roll with, and if we deem it fit to be able to have a little more flexibility, and we can do it differently than other, uh, ice rinks that we visited, then we will. And as you can see there, there's the comps, um, for other ice rinks. These are all consider, these are all ribbons, um, similar to ours. Chicago's a little bit of a different, they have a different model, um, they are very profit-driven for what they, what they're offering, but South Bend and Toledo both have similar uh, pricing structures of what, what we're looking at. For the curling sheet.
Sorry Garrett, question, Mr. Corbin?
Oh, so that $5 range, uh, what I mentioned for that range, the $5 are discounted nights, you know, potentially a Wednesday or Tuesday or Wednesday, similar to what, what a movie theater would do. There's a discounted night so the community can come out and have discounted skating nights.
Could you do that on 5th Wednesdays, so that there's not a council meeting?
Absolutely, yep, if that helps in this process, for sure. So the curling sheet rental, uh, this one, this one was a little bit more of a moving target for us, so we'll continue to dial this in, especially after year one. Um, and we'll, we'll actually have the ability to remove this if we need to, just how the fees and charge, uh, timeline works for council, but during non-prime times, we're gonna be $75 to $125, and then during prime times, which mostly are weekends, 125 to 150. This is gonna coincide with our open skate times, and it's going to include a modified curling stone rentals, I use the words modified because curling stone is usually about 40 some pounds, and we don't wanna be passing those in and out of the windows, so we're gonna be about half the size of what a regular curling stone would be at our ice rink. Uh, and then, like I mentioned, our curling sheet is unique, it's about half the size of what a regulation curling sheet would be, so that's why the comps are a little bit different, so we are well under a halfway point of what it would be to go to a curling facility and rent, uh, a sheet of ice there. Learn to skate classes. So this will be about $40 to $60 per participant, and this is very similar to the other learn-to programs we have. We have a lot of, uh, you know, learn to play basketball, learn to, uh, play volleyball programs, and again, this fits right in that same wheelhouse. This will be about 15 to 25 participants per class. We are working with Hope College Student Council on offering free options, um, that will be a process that's we work on through the fall. It's hard to get a hold of a lot of students over the summer, which I understand. Um, and then classes will likely take place on Saturday mornings. Field trip packages, this is one thing that I'm extremely excited about. We have some great community partners with our school districts, and so partnership schools, those will be the, um, basically Holland Public, Holland Christian, Black River, and Vanderbilt. We will work to offer field trips to them at cost, which would just be the cost for us to have staff out there, and then the cost for us to provide hot chocolate cookies, whatever, whatever the kids are looking for in, uh, at 10 AM in the morning. And then, uh, from, for other schools, uh, Zealand, West Ottawa, it'll be about $7 per skater to come out and, uh, potentially skate for 90 minutes during the day as, as a field trip. So the goal of this program is create accessibility for, uh, the community, for the, the schools that we work with. And, uh, we've already had the talks with a lot of the schools, or pretty much every school that's on that list. And, uh, they're very, very excited about it, and we're excited to get that program rolling. And so we're kind of pushing this to be for second graders, but we're going to also work with the school to see what's the best fit for them. We don't wanna force them to only bring out the second graders if they have a different idea in mind. So private events. Looking at this being $500 per hour and then $5 per skater, uh, that, that comes avail, or comes along, so this is not gonna be available during open skate hours, so I don't want there to be thoughts of certain people coming through and at 4 PM on a Saturday and shutting down the entire rink. That's not what that, that will be. Um, this is similar to other pricing models that we do. Bowls Pool is a good example. We only offer private event rentals that are outside of open swim there. And this is one of those things that'll be, it'll be nice for us to be able to offer it, but it is a lower priority for year one, just because the main priority is gonna be open skate and serving the community the best we can to get as many people out there as possible, but we do wanna have the ability to run this type of program as we do view it as a, a good option for the community going forward after '25, '26. But as I mentioned there, uh, we're gonna wanna look at what open skate does to see and dial in what type of private event hours we wanna be able to offer to the community. And then, this is just a basic, uh, what, what I envisioned for Saturday at the Ice Ribbon. Early morning, we're gonna have one of our, uh, maintenance staff come out and they'll start clearing snow, resurfacing. And by 9 AM, hopefully we'll have a couple learn to skate classes that are able to come out onto the ice. And then 11 to 12, we'll take, we'll take on the flip of going from, uh, learn to skate classes to open skating and working on um, getting prepared for that. And then from there, we're hoping to have five open skate sessions with 30 minutes in between each of them to create a good, uh, sheet of ice for our, uh, for our community to be able to use. So that's, we're hoping that, I'm hoping that this is something that reflects a high level of use and high level accessibility to the community, because ultimately, that's who we're doing this for. And that's all I have.
Any other, any other questions for Garrett? Yes, Quincy?
With, with, um, all the other events or opportunities we have, we utilize the Sal Perez, uh, funds for kids who may not have finances to be able to do these. Will that be accessible for this as well?
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks for bringing that up. Yep, so we'll still, they'll still be able to apply for a scholarship online for open skate, if that's, if that's what they wanna use it for, or learn to skate programs as well. Yep.
Thank you. Good to see you, uh, out of the booth too, Milwaukee.
Yeah, thank you, I'm excited about it too.
Tim?
Garrett, what's your anticipated staffing need, do you think?
Yeah, for open skate, uh, we've worked really closely with Howard Park in South Bend, and they have about eight staff members on at a time. Um, that includes concessions, rental window, ice monitors, um, somebody checking tickets at the, at the gate. So we are viewing there be during during a Saturday, most likely, it'll be eight people that'll be on, and probably during the week, it'll be a little bit less than that, so we're hoping to bring on about 30 and 30, 30 different, uh, staff members to work at the ice park.
Mike?
Hey Garrett, a lot of the, the Parks and Rec programming uh, differentiates resident rates from non-resident rates. Like I could see that woven in through the field trip packages. How did you guys evaluate that for? Like I could see that woven in through the field trip packages. How did you guys evaluate that for the open skate?
Yeah, so the learner, the resident, non-resident pricing will still present itself in the learn to skate programming. But for just open skate, that won't be an option there. I think part of it, part of it is just enforceability. And I don't like to put a ton of things in place that we can't do effectively.
Yeah, Tim?
A follow-up as well. You had projected a Saturday schedule here. Would that be mirrored on Sunday as well?
We probably won't run any programming on Sunday mornings, but right around noon, we would probably have a, we'd start our open skate schedule again. And then, again, I'm just projecting here, but we'd probably be done one session earlier. So we'd only run to the six PM session.
Any other questions? Great. Thanks Garrett, appreciate it.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve the proposed, the park fees and charges that they.
Moved by Freeman is their support. Support by Bird, any discussion? Seeing none. Matt, would you please call the roll? Corbin? Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
That item passes. Great, thank you. Item twelve, Echo four point one, award bid for tulip bulbs. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Andy Kenyon is coming up and will present this. I probably could have made the decision to just say, let's put this also on consent agenda. But what I will tell you is you're about, you've seen information in your pack and you understand that. Unfortunately, we got a not-so-great surprise in the cost of tulip bulbs this year. So I thought probably better to just make sure that we cover this and, and let you all know where we're at. So Andy, with, with that wonderful introduction.
Awesome. Thanks Keith. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a quick kudos back to Garrett for a second. Himself and his team have done an amazing job getting this ice rink ready to go for the community in the fall. It's been a huge lift and it's been a long time in the making, months and months, years and years we've been doing this. So shout out to them and congrats on a job well done so far. And they're preparing very well for this and I can't, we can't wait to have it open. So we're very excited and good work. So tonight I come to you and ask for approval of our annual tulip bid. As Keith alluded, we opened bids a couple of weeks ago. And to our surprise, they were quite a bit higher than what we've ever seen in the past. In asking all of the bidders, the reasoning for that, they, as I mentioned in my report, they talk about tariffs. They talk about shipping and they also talk about some very poor weather that the Netherlands has had in the last few months that have caused the tulip farmers to not have a great product. They've convinced me and us that we will have great tulips, but they had to hunt for them a lot differently than they have in the past. So significant, significant change. We did ask for a few more tulip bulbs in there as well. But on average, we did a little bit of math and each tulip bulb has raised from around six cents a bulb up to over eighteen or twenty cents a bulb extra. When you're buying something that's a dime up to about thirty cents at the high end, that's a big difference. And as you can see also, we did have three bidders this time, which was great. And they ranged from price from our low bidder, who was Unix, for about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, all the way up to over three hundred and almost ninety thousand dollars. So it's a big range. We're, we're confident in our supplier, Unix. We've used them many years in the past. They've supplied us with great tulips and we're excited to do business with them again.
Questions for Andy? Yes, Devin?
Did I hear a double? Is that correct?
Some, some bulbs were. Yep, yep. They range, like I said, they range in price from very simple, a dime, twelve cents, all the way up to thirty cents a bulb. Yep.
Any other questions? Great. Thanks Andy.
Thank you.
Yep. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve the award for tulip bulbs.
Moved by Bird, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? I, I just have a couple of comments. One ouch, but the, the other comment I want to make is nine hundred and seventy-six thousand people attended tulip time this year. I'm, I'm often asked what the city spends on tulip time. I actually, I asked our previous finance director what the, what the city spends. Tim Vogli said to me, Mayor, you don't want to know. And, and I said, you know what? Whatever we spend, it's, it's probably a really good investment in this community. And in the return that we get, even though this is just shy of two hundred thousand dollars, to attract nine hundred and seventy-six thousand people into this community over the course of that week. If each one of those people just spends a hundred dollars, that's a hundred million dollars in this community over the course of that, that week. I think that's a pretty good investment. Mr. Bird?
I, I think we could probably tie that to each tulip bulb and, and see what the ROI is on each tulip bulb.
I'll, I'll let you do the math on that, Mr. Bird. Mr. Corbin?
So I think the more you brag, the more the price goes up. So just be careful how much we brag about this.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure whether they're listening at Unix right now. I'm not sure. Ms. Sol?
And I just wondering the tulip dig, if we're going to raise the bucket prices.
Yeah. Any, any other discussion? All right. Matt, would you please call the roll? Corbin? Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
That item passes. Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda, twelve Echo six point one, gifts. Matt, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's offices pleased to report the following gifts. For Parks and Recreation Department, Sal Perez Scholarship Fund, reporting dates of one-one twenty-twenty-five to six-thirty of twenty-twenty-five, cash receipt donations of two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents, and employee deductions of eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credit to the appropriate accounts, and expression of gratitude be forwarded to the donors.
Wonderful, thank you. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve said gifts to the Sal Perez Fund with the token of our appreciation and gratitude.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan, any discussion? I just wanted to point out, those were employee deductions? Is that correct?
Yeah, pretty cool. We referenced the Sal Perez Scholarship before. Some of you may remember him. I very fondly remember Sal back in days where I pretended to play some basketball. And Sal was always a friendly, wonderful man in face. So pretty cool that you have many employees that do a paycheck deduction in order to pay into the scholarship fund that Quincy and Garrett referenced tonight. That goes back to youth in our community, that they can participate in youth programming in our community that may otherwise not be able to.
Great. Thank you for expounding on that. That's exactly what I was hoping for. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, twelve Echo six point five, approval of special liquor license for Taste of Downtown Holland fundraiser. This is the item that had been taken off consent. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, I'm going to throw this over to Assistant City Manager Matt Van Dyken.
Yes, thank you. So this is an exciting new event for downtown through the PSD. This is a Taste of Downtown where a lot of the downtown restaurants will participate in this. Warehouse Six, as you know, is located over on the, recently renovated Sixth Street, beautiful over there. It is going to be a little bit more of an exclusive event with a limited number of tickets. And this request comes to you is to allow us to serve alcohol at the event. If you remember, maybe you don't, we used to do a, a very successful event that ran its course called Up, Up on the Rooftops. We would have a, a big reception after that. We'd have to get a liquor license for that event as well. So very similar to that, we'll have tips approved servers, obviously, at the event. But we're very much looking forward to it as a replacement for the Up on the Rooftop fundraiser.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Corbin?
Will this be anywhere on the streets or sidewalks of Sixth Street?
This will not. I don't believe this type of liquor licenses even allows the participation in the social district.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve?
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Schulteis, any discussion? Seeing none. Matt, would you please call the roll? Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin? Mayor Box?
Yes.
That motion passes. Great, thank you. My agenda says communications from the city manager, but my screen says communications from the mayor and boy, I am torn.
You'll have your chance, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Van Beek?
Excellent. I will try to go quick. I see that there's a former council member in the audience. Seven forty is long for us right now. It may not have been in the past, but you know, I, I think the Boy Scouts might, might want to go home soon. So I'll try to be quick. See, I got, I got you guys. I got you. So first of all, just a reminder, this communication has gone out from Mallory and my office to you and also in every Friday communication, the Michigan Municipal League Convention this year is in Grand Rapids. So the ability to drive back and forth the days of September seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, you do get early pricing if you get in contact with Mallory before August one. So just plugging that one more time. The Ambassador Academy, I went through applications today. Remember we try to keep that to twenty-five? Well, folks, we're already over thirty-one applications. Fantastic thing to have, but what that does mean, and you'll recall that I've been saying this for a few times, we have shut down accepting new applications. Mary Ann does a fantastic job with this program. We know that maybe some of those thirty-one will have to back out. So we already have kind of a waitlist and all those types of things. But just look forward for that for council members, but we have shut down that process. Kind of mentioned it earlier, but it was kind of cool consent. You had a lot of budget, you know, capital projects on there. And it's the way the process works, right? We plan for them, they're in the budget. Each one of those, I know you click through all those links. One of the things we include is an item from the budget book that links back to, hey, this is what we're proposing to spend. And here's a picture of it and a description of it and the sustainability of that. I'll also highlight, because it doesn't happen often, we had two items on the consent agenda tonight that actually used our local preference policy, which basically says if you fall within a certain range and you have a local vendor that can provide equivalent service or product within a certain range. If that local vendor wants to meet the low bid, they just meet the low bid and then they get that business. So we had two examples of that tonight, which doesn't happen tremendously often, but just wanted to highlight that for you. I'll also highlight there was a grant for the recycling center. I know a lot of you are eager about this. We're eager about this. You know that we've been working on a couple of different sites. We're still having trouble getting one of the sites over the finish line. So we're actually very aggressively pursuing another site in partnership with, with a group that we think meets all the criteria also. So there's no shortage of work going on trying to get these important priorities over the line. So stay tuned on that. And then final thing that I have that I kind of was, you heard referenced earlier in the night. Next week, we do have a scheduled study session. We had one item that we've been planning on, which is a presentation from our Regional Economic Development Organization, Lake Shore Advantage. We are hoping to, I'm not going to promise that we'll get there yet, but we're hoping to come back with you from a study session that we had just a little bit ago on housing support policy and a change where we can possibly take a look at a policy change that would support a local entity that's providing affordable housing. So we want to outline maybe some recommendations that we have there and continue that discussion. And then you heard a request, even though you heard a request of, of things on the ballot in November, you probably picked up that, a request from the museum organization to be in front of you for a study session for next week. And as you know, the process there, I'm the gatekeeper for a lot of, for most things, I would say, that are city business. And then there are other things where I look to you all to provide input and direction as to what goes on those study session items. So I'd be, I would recommend that that's something that you should hear more about in a, in a session such as that. But, so I do recommend that that would be on the study session next week, but I also look for your input and guidance. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I do have two proclamations this evening. The first has to do with Laup and Fiesta. Whereas Latin Americans United for Progress, Laup is a Latino, Latina organization formed in nineteen sixty-four by founders Lupita and Tino Reyes, Juan Vasquez, Gilbert, excuse me, Gilberto Marroquín Senior and Raymond Gutierrez. And whereas we celebrate another year of growth and partnerships within the community to bring services that include Spanish classes, citizenship classes, financial literacy, individual and family counseling, youth programming, workforce development and small business hub. And whereas Latin Americans United for Progress continues to empower Latinos to participate in creating a better community for all through advocacy, education and celebration. And whereas Holland celebrates the rich diversity within, within this community that includes ancestry from Mexico, Cuba, Spain and Central and South America. And whereas Laup continues to triple community impact by enhancing services, fostering organizational growth and expanding staff to better address diverse needs in our Latino and Latina community. And whereas Laup has helped stu, their students receive over one million dollars in scholarships, has helped participants in educate, elevate workforce program earn over one point four million dollars in wages that are reinvested in the local economy, provided two hundred prosperous small business hub entrepreneurs coaching sessions and served over six hundred individuals through resource navigation in the community. And whereas Aquí Estamos, we are here, Laup serves the Lake Shore community, is resilient and brings the community together to advance opportunities yesterday, today and tomorrow. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, welcome the community to join the Latin Americans United for Progress's sixty-first Fiesta. We invite the community to join the week-long activities beginning July fourteenth through the Fiesta Celebration on July nineteenth as we sell, as a day to celebrate our community, the contributions of the Latino community. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, the sixteenth day of twenty-twenty-five, Mayor Nathan Box. And as was prefaced by Mr. DeYoung during, during public comment, a proclamation in regard to American, the Americans with Disabilities Act anniversary. Whereas on July twenty-sixth nineteen ninety, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas the ADA legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, we celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equity and inclusion for all people. And whereas while we may not encounter a disability today, that as we age, we are likely to present with a disability. And whereas as a city, we recognize that removing barriers and advancing accessibility to all residents is a continuous improvement process. And whereas as a city, we commit to providing access and opportunities for all to engage in municipal government. And whereas we invite community stakeholders to proactively consider the needs of people with disabilities in their places of work, worship, business, schools and other areas of the community life. And whereas we recognize those individuals that championed the Americans with Disabilities Act like Ed Roberts, Judy Human, Bob Williams, Justin Dart, Lydia Z. Brown and many family, and the many family and community advocates throughout Holland. And whereas as a city, And whereas, as a city, we recognize and applaud the work of local organizations like Disability Network Lake Shore, Brothers and Sisters Homes, Benjamin's Hope, ARC Advocacy and Resource Center, and the many nonprofits that provide and address the needs of our, of our people with disabilities and their families. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, the Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council proclaim July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five as the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and urge all Holland residents to elevate the voices of people with disabilities, and participate in the ADA thirty-fifth anniversary celebration at Moran Park on July twenty-sixth from twelve PM to four PM, and invite the community to attend and elevate the voice of persons with disabilities. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, on this day, the sixteenth day of July twenty-twenty-five, Mayor Nathan Box. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, item number fifteen, appointments, motions, communications from council members, and Mr. Corbin, I believe you have something this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's recommended the city council approve the reappointment of Ron Hemamick to the community pool authority for a period of term, a four-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine.
And I'd be looking for a motion in that regard?
Salute.
Moved by Reiman, is there support? Support by Byrd, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Any other motions, appointments, communications from council members? Yes, Mr. Shay?
Yeah, just to be clear, if Mr. Van Beek was looking for support for a study session, I would love to talk about the museum and a study session, so thank you.
Any other communications from council? Mr. Byrd?
Yes, I just wanted to clear up, there was something that was stated earlier regarding Mr. Van Beek's last name. It was stated that his last name is Mr. Verbeek. I wanted to set the record straight, that his name is not Mr. Verbeek, it is actually Mr. Van Beek.
All right, thank you, Mr. Byrd. Any other motions, communications, appointments from council members? Seeing none, there's just one more motion that I would entertain at this time.
Move to approve.
Moved by Reiman, support by Byrd, all those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.